All right, thank you everybody for joining us for the May 2024 Mount June Borough Meeting. For those of us joining us on Facebook, you'll notice we look a little funny. So Facebook has apparently made it to where you can't go landscape on video. So it is horizontal, which means you're not seeing everything, but you should be able to hear everything. And if we can find a fix for it by next month, we will. With that, as a reminder of the five minute time limit, I will open it up to comments from anyone in attendance from the public. You were first, Jim.
Okay, well, that's portraits landscape. If I stand in front of that, will I be skinnier?
Yes. Here, here.
Is there any update on cell phone call?
Um, I'm from sewer, anybody from sewer now?
No, it's still working on it.
And I see there's always rumors and everything, especially in our area, I grew up here. I see there's a lot of digging going on right on Hill. So any comment on that?
Digging like construction? I know they've been doing some things.
I'll adjust that.
Yes, please.
They're putting a sawmill in.
Okay, so that is true.
And it's allowed, yes, and it's allowed in an agricultural area. He's only going to use his property and his wood.
Yeah. Yeah, no, I just, I've been hearing rumors, so I just wanted to get part of the debate.
Doesn't the county have a rule that if you disturb only forty-five hundred square feet of soil, you have to have a groundwater survey?
If he makes it non-permeable.
No, I was just questioning, I didn't know.
All right, is that it for you, Jim?
Yeah.
All right. Who would like to speak next? Mr. Hader?
Well, I'd like to comment on the sewer authority appointments again, and I did last one. I'm not sure if anybody reviewed the minutes or not, but they've had thirty days to do so. And so I'm hoping that somebody did. So I want to clarify that in the last five years, only one person has resigned from the Mount June Sewer Authority. All others appointed to five year terms have served their entire term. I have all the minutes to prove that that is the case. The person that resigned was John Casey, and I have concrete and undisputable proof that his five year term ran from January seventh, which was his first sewer meeting of two thousand nineteen, to December thirty first of two thousand twenty-three. John Casey took Jim Trussell's position after his term expired. Casey resigned on six fifteen of two thousand twenty-two, and on seven five of two thousand twenty-two, Brett Morgan was appointed to complete his term ending twelve thirty-one of two thousand twenty-three. And I have the minutes, and I'm sure the Borough Secretary has the minutes as well. Therefore, Brett Morgan's term has expired, and the Borough appointed Jesse to fill the vacancy. Once you appoint Jesse to the position, you do not have the legal authority to remove him. Only a court of common pleas can remove an authority member and has to be for cause. A hearing would have to take place, and a court order would need to be issued in order to remove a member. And that is not my opinion, that is the law. Because only one person resigned in the last five years, it is very easy to see who is legally on the authority and when they expire. There's absolutely no confusion, other than the fabricated confusion that the Borough Manager claims only because she needs confusion to manipulate the Borough Council into approving her fabricated list of the current members and their term limits. Ernie Rankin's term rarely did expire in December of two thousand twenty-two. And on December fifth of two thousand twenty-two, at the Borough Regular Meeting, Councilwoman Park motioned to reappoint Rankin for a five year term seconded by Councilwoman Blankenship. Once this action was taken, the Borough does not have the authority to change that. That is the law, that is not my opinion. And the Borough Manager knows that. The Borough Manager sent an email to John Thomas, the Borough's lawyer, on four-
You're at two and a half minutes, I don't know how much you have left. Just letting you know you have two and a half minutes left.
Okay, thank you. The Borough Manager sent an email to John Thomas, the Borough Lawyer, on four two of two thousand twenty-four, stating that there were people sitting on the board without being reappointed. That is a false statement. Terms ending and not being addressed, that is a false statement. Five year appointments that should have not been because anytime someone resigned, they didn't have the next person finish the term they started, everyone at five years. Needless to say, when I came back to the Borough job in January of two thousand twenty-one, there was a mess. Quote, "The Sewer Secretary and myself went back through the letters between the Borough and the sewer and the minutes and came up with a list of people and when their terms should end." I have a copy of that list, and there are absolutely no minutes to stand by this. This is a, this is a officer member principal of authority paper, which was signed by the Sewer Secretary stating that Ernie Rankin's term ran out at the end of two thousand twenty-three, C's term runs out in two thousand twenty-four, Harp's term runs out in two thousand twenty-five, Morgan's term runs out in two thousand twenty-six, and Butch Colley's term runs out in two thousand twenty-seven. This is a falsified document. The minutes clearly show that Butch Colley and Brian C's were appointed on the same day, and they won't expire on the same day. And so, and so, on January sixth of two thousand twenty, at the Borough Meeting, a motion was made by Parr to appoint Oakley Colley to fill the end of term of Mike Winstone, seconded by Gear, and that motion passed. And in the very next sentence, motion made by Parr to reappoint C's to his end term, seconded by Barb Harp. So at the time, Barb Harp was on the Borough, and she knows that you can't appoint two people at the same day, but she participated in that by seconding the motion, and now blames the confusion on the former Sewer Secretary. Needless to say, the minutes prove Colley expires at the same time as C's on December thirty-one of two thousand twenty-four. She states that.
That's your point, yes, thank you.
Okay, thank you.
John, do you have two minutes that were expired? Can I please look at those?
Yeah, what do you, I mean, am I not talking more?
No, not at this point.
Okay, so what is it that you want me to do? I'll leave these with you.
Okay.
Before you leave, I got one question. What do you think I'm getting from all this?
Absolutely nothing.
I'm just curious.
I just wanted to educate you people that there's a problem. And I feel that since you're sworn to take note of office, that you would at least look at the minutes to see if the list that the Borough Secretary has fabricated has any minutes to verify.
I didn't fabricate anything. Kelly and I went through the letters that went back and forth, that once somebody was appointed and somebody resigned and all that. You don't have to come in here and try to make me look like a bad person, John.
To answer your question, sir, alls I'm asking for is that the Borough officials look at the minutes instead of asking a person how it should be. Because unfortunately, when somebody says something, you put your trust in them that they're telling you the truth. And all I'm asking you to do is look at the minutes. The minutes don't lie, and I have the minutes, and if someone wants to look at them, that would show that I am correct. I also did a write to note to see if their minutes corresponded with mine, and they do.
We're gonna address this later, John, you're welcome to stay and see what we do.
Okay, thank you.
I will say that the information is valued, but the opinion that you spoke about, about Barb, that's not based in fact, that's your opinion. You can't back up that, that's an allegation of her intent. There's a different, you could state that a mistake happened and that maybe things didn't happen correctly, but you cannot speak to her intent and her character, which is, and that was the only part of that that I had a problem with.
I didn't say anything about intent.
By speaking to her character, you speak about intent. By saying she's manipulating us, you're implying that's an intentional decision on her part to manipulate us, instead of perhaps an oversight or a mistake, which is human nature. And that's where I'm saying you're coming with a lot of facts, and that's good, but you weaken your argument with opinion.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Okay. We will be addressing all of the sewer things later in this meeting. You can see under, on the agenda, under sewer, questioning the board members, so it is on the agenda to be discussed later, and it will be. So with that, is there anyone else who would like?
All I wanna do is know what's gonna go on. I'm just curious to see where I'm going, if I'm going back on it or if I'm off. That's all I care.
Okay, well, as I said, we'll get to all of that in due time. Does anyone else have anything to say before we start? Okay.
Chuck, are you still there?
I got it on mute. Probably on mute.
No, because he's talking too early.
Chuck?
Hello?
I'm here, can you hear me?
Yeah.
Yeah, we can hear you fine. All right, with that, we will close the public address, and we'll move on to the Mayor's Report.
Thank you. Chuck and I had a really good meeting with the Director of Membership from the Sister City Program this month, and we talked about, you know, what our interests are in our community. I think we'll probably address this more when we get down to old business, but the membership fee is a hundred and ninety dollars a year to be a member of the Sister City Program, which gives you access to all of their resources and pairing opportunities and puts you into their network. So we had a pretty long call with the folks from their team, they're based in DC. It's a sort of a government organization, which is part of the, one of, I can't even remember which agency it is. I think it's Secretary of State's Office, but, and it's still a town of our size, a hundred and ninety dollars a year. And we discussed having a community meeting following this meeting, if you are interested in joining the program and becoming a member of the Sister City with folks in town, with Swedish, you know, backgrounds to think about which town we wanna pair with in Sweden, if that's the route we all wanna go. So I think it's a really good opportunity for folks in the community to come together. You know, we have a lot of different groups that, you know, Swedish Association, Coalition, we have a lot of people who are, you know, doing a lot of good work, and I think this might be a good way to bring it to a place where we wanna, you know, go think about how our community could, you know, have economic interests in another country and all that kind of stuff. So like I said, we can talk about that more if you guys have questions or anything in old business, but that's kind of an exciting update there. And then we also had a nice meeting with Joel from the West Penn Sustainability Fund. Frank and Robin were there, we did some follow up with him, but it was a good meeting. And I think the next time that the grants come around that they're, they have opened, it might be, it's worth us thinking about what we apply for there. So other than that, just thinking forward to Memorial Day. I see that the permit was applied for, but if anyone, I think that the locals are waiting on the parade and such, so just never had a, you know, I know there's been some talk about not keeping the parade kind of tight and stuff, so I'm not sure if they have touched base with the fire department yet, but just thinking about that. That's all I have.
All right, any questions for the Mayor? Entertain a motion to accept the Mayor's Report?
Oh, motion.
Second.
First motion, Frank's second, all those in favor? Any opposed? Motion carries. Look at the maintenance report. See if we have anything additional to what is on here. I was told the guys also cleaned out the drains on Division Street after the fire department was up there. Just as a, something they did, I was told to make sure people were aware they had done that.
I'll make the motion to approve the maintenance report.
Second.
Chris makes a motion to approve the maintenance report, seconded by Tom, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? That motion carries. We'll move on to the Borough Manager Report. Danny Burr?
Yeah, I don't have anything else that's there.
Harp, do you know how much it saved us on our insurance with the small increase?
It was like twenty-five hundred dollars, I think.
You say that saves us twenty-five hundred?
In the budget, I budgeted fifteen, it came in at one point nine.
I know we have a little bit of ways away, but make sure it's on our radar that that grant she's talking about here, another shot at the sidewalk grant comes up in July with a thirty percent match.
Okay, that's a, yeah, that's a different one. But if you guys are interested, I can use, I mean, I have all the information from the first one.
I think it's, what was, what was the match on the first one, do you remember?
We just paid for engineering.
I don't know if that was a good idea. Based on where we're at with the park and everything, I like, I like you to do that.
It would be like three hundred thousand dollars, because it was a nine hundred thousand dollar project.
Yeah, the thirty percent was what I was worried about.
Plus the engineering.
Probably.
No, that would just be thirty.
It'd just be thirty percent.
Yeah.
We paid three hundred thousand on the last one, just for the engineering, plus the extras, so maybe.
Me, I could put in for it if we, if we get it, you can always deny it or whatever. It's up to you guys.
What would be the timeframe on distribution of funds in construction, do you have any idea?
I believe they announce it in the fall, and they would release the funds the following spring.
We'd have it happening around the same time as the park finished, so it's a matter of do we wanna kind of delay to spread the funding or take a shot? What do you think?
I think maybe we just focus on what we got going on.
Okay.
It's kind of where I'm at, we may be see what comes around next year.
Okay.
Everybody have a different idea? All right, I'll entertain a motion to accept the Manager's Report.
Motion.
Tom makes a motion.
I'll second, Robin second.
Robin seconds, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Take a moment to look at the minutes, if there are no questions or concerns, they will stand as presented. When you're done with that, you can start looking at the Trasgers Report and kind of those.
I'll make the motion to accept the financial statement and payment of bills.
Chris makes a motion to accept financial statement and payment of bills. Is there a second on that?
One second.
Ten seconds, any additional questions or concerns? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed?
Barb, is anybody signed up for the spring cleanup yet?
Yeah, I have seven, I think.
Do you really?
Yeah.
All right, we'll move on to committee reports at this time. So we have maintenance, safety buildings.
All right, that's the only thing I have. I didn't get a hold, I was trying to catch Rick today to see if he had a hurt anymore on the street sweeper, but it was broke down. And they were waiting for parts, and I don't know if they've ever, if he's hurt anymore on it or not.
Nothing I'm aware of.
Tried a couple times today, he was getting answers to cell phones, so I'll find out what he heard.
We're not in any super hurry where we need to, like, if we don't hear by a certain date, we have to look for another option. Do you think we're still good for now?
I'm hoping that we can get them for more of that. And I'd also thank the ones that have been out sweeping their sidewalks and cleaning the, and I skidded stuff up. I appreciate the ones that have done that, and be grateful to see the ones that have not done it yet get out and get some of that, it's on Main Street.
Okay. Anything else?
No. Brett, you know anything else?
Finance insurance.
Harp and I, Barb and I did a quick review of the budget for the first quarter, and everything seems to be in line as much as we're gonna have it right now. We did have a little bit more truck expense than what we were thinking, but we're prepared, we're gonna have that from time to time. And also, like she said, we are receiving a quote for the insurance, for the health insurance for the employees, and their policy is going to ninety-ten, which means after the deductible is paid, they're responsible, responsible for ten percent or whatever their hospital bills and stuff will be.
Okay.
Elizabeth and I don't have anything, thank you.
The additional truck expenses, we have legal room to manage that?
Yes.
Okay. All right, personnel?
We're good at this time, Mr. President.
Thank you. Need to develop and planning parks?
Well, the park still has their quotes, but we have no money. As far as solar goes, we have a quote. We know it's gonna cost one twenty. It's finding the money if there's any ground, because right now, as it stands, the forty percent back from the federal government is pretty much guaranteed. The other ten percent, nobody can seem to identify the issue of American-made versus American-assembled, and, because they want domestic product in the last ten percent. And most of the installers that I've spoken with, they all push for the ground mount because you're using US steel. So I guess you're exceeding fifty percent of the total cost. There are solar panels, if they're thrown on the roof, we, I guess, the panels might be thrown together or, you know, semi-manufactured here, but nothing. If we were able to get grants with the forty percent and say a fifty percent grant, we'd have to put out ten percent. That ten percent would be regained in about two years, because it's about a roughly a three thousand dollar savings going that route between the solar generated and the renewable energy credits. The only thing I worry about with the energy credits is, last year they were pretty much forty-five dollars, this year they're sitting at about forty. One of the things is, the more that people do it, those energy credits might eventually disappear. And they're only useful for three years. It's not like you can hold on to them and say, oh, well, five years from now, we'll, and we got a big chunk of money. If you don't use them within the third, I think it's within the three years, they're useless. So it's feasible, it's just finding the money, finding the grants, and like the Mayor said, the sustainable energy is willing to look at another grant option, but they're not gonna pay a hundred percent. I don't know anybody that's gonna pay a hundred percent. But if we get the rebates and maybe something else, it might be feasible. Down a side note, there was a school down in Pittsburgh, three years ago, three years ago, I guess, they put solar in it, and they've saved probably about twenty-five million dollars.
A year?
No, total. If their electricity's twenty-five million dollars a year, there's a problem.
Big school, definitely.
Big school. But yeah, and the only difference between down there and up here is basically one full sunny day. Down that way, they get one sixty on average, up here we see one fifty-nine. And like Joel said, even in the wintertime, they still produce a whole lot more energy than people think.
All right, well, I would say keep looking for more opportunities throughout there, and if we get an idea of how much it would cost us to get them on board, because that's what, that's what we're gonna need to know, especially since we just turned on the sidewalk grant for cost reasons, that's kind of where we're at right now.
Well, if we didn't get it fully covered anywhere, that ten percent's gonna be about twelve thousand dollars. Now, parting with twelve thousand dollars for some might be hard, but if you're gonna get it back in two years and then progressive cost savings throughout the next twenty-five to fifty years, the panels themselves are guaranteed for twenty-five as far as operation. Snap it in half, they ain't paying for it. Oh, and the roof mounts don't really cause any damage, they don't move. They're not bolted in, there is no damage. As far as snow being removed, not really an issue because they do generate their own heat. I was reading an article where, I guess they did a computer, I think it was in two thousand twenty, they did a computer-generated, how big this thing would have to be to actually affect the environment, because there is a temperature change. And you would need something the size of Egypt to do something like that.
So what is your proposal for the next step?
Next step, I imagine, if you just keep looking, seeing if there's grants available and possibly, even if it comes down to it, waiting till two thousand twenty-five to reapply with the West Penn Sustainable Energy Fund. Two thousand twenty-five, I think, is when the monies will actually be available for the federal government to be passing them out, and maybe by then they'll have the other ten percent adder figured out.
All right, anything else right now?
No, I think that's it.
All right, thank you. Move on to fire department. We had our house signs meeting, thank you for those who were able to attend, I know this is somewhat short notice, but it was just to kind of get the ball rolling, which we were able to do. We were thinking of, as far as Borough cost, we're thinking of a trifold flyer that could be mailed out to one six seven four oh, explaining the ordinance in layman's terms, explaining what the requirements are, and then the cost of, which we don't have yet, that's Scotty came in to tell me. We're working on getting the cost right now, we're looking at price breaks, where those are gonna be. So it's about two hundred and fifty dollars to do a bulk mail, and then obviously printing it up, so that would be our cost. So I thought for purchasing the signs and the poles, which we would like to do in advance of the public, especially if we get a price break by buying so much, is either the Borough finds some money to pay that until the public pays us back and buys them from us, or if the Borough is not in a position to do that, the fire department is willing to front that cost with the idea that these would be fully, we have six zones, we're at a two week increments, they have thirty days to paint their signs, so there's a little bit of overlap, and we are done by fall. Assuming we can get these things in a reasonable amount of time, the goal is to have this done this year before winter, so everything can be in the ground as best as possible. So yeah, we're getting prices, we'll figure that out, and I've been working on the trifold design. So if anybody has any thoughts on what should be in there, or even a different one. We're trying to come up with the best way to communicate to everyone in town. They're not all on Facebook, they don't all pay attention to flyers posted around town. Some of them are just unreachable for whatever reason, so that's why we thought the mailing might be the best way. It goes to everybody's house. We have accurate listing through the Sewer Authority as far as addresses, that's up to date. So that's where we're at on that.
Can they just get hammered in the ground, or do they have to like do a whole installation or do they get put in the ground?
They can just be hammered in the ground if you want, I mean, you're gonna probably go down.
Will they have to have P one calls for all of it, Brett?
Oh, probably.
Definitely.
You're gonna need to go pretty deep, that's why we're doing it in zones, and we'd be willing to help with installation. The fire department's already said they'd be willing to do that. And then maybe we could even, as the department or the Borough, we could even make that call and say that we're doing this whole section of town.
I told them I would help do the P one calls, because anytime you get over a thousand feet, there's a new ticket. So there might be multiple tickets in their zones, there will be multiple.
Right, so figure maybe the best way to divide that up. Okay, so we will coordinate with you when we get closer to that. Anybody else have any thoughts or concerns about it? What if somebody wants to buy our pole? They are going to be told that as long as whatever they purchase is in compliance with the ordinance completely. If they wanna put it on a wooden post with a woodpecker on top, they can, you know? But they're responsible for it, so if it breaks or gets hit or whatever, they gotta replace it on their own dime. The sign itself, we are providing in compliance with the ordinance, but, I mean, we, we can't force someone to get something, the post that we have, we recommend it, it's a good dirty post, it's the one all the signs use. If somebody wants to do like Brett talked about last month, where they get the breakaway ones, invest a little bit more into it, that's certainly their choice, but as long as they're in compliance with the ordinance, it'll be fine.
Are people gonna get fined if they don't have it then?
At some point, we as a body will have to determine at one point where it's, yeah, like this is your deadline. Like you're either compliant by that date, or you will start getting warnings and stuff like that. That's why we wanna kind of get rolling on it, so it's ready, nothing else. By spring of next year, we could say everyone should be compliant by now.
What if you have the houses next to the road, I had somebody ask me where are they gonna put it when their houses are right next to the sidewalk?
If they're within, it's covered in the- If they're within, it's covered in the ordinance, they have an option to put on the house above the door.
Like twenty?
Horizontal instead of vertical. Whatever the, you know, so many feet from the house, the rules are different if you're right on them. And certainly for the business district, they have different, and we'll have all that in the flyer as well, explaining it to them. Along with, we got a suggestion of diagrams and drawings, make it very super clear for people, so. Go ahead, Brett. Anything else? All right, library, anything going on over there?
Our meeting's next week, they have their art club every Wednesday. We're talking about doing every other Saturday, I believe, like a craft and fun day for the kids, like from ten until two or something like that. But most of the shifts are covered and things seem to be going really well.
Good, glad to hear it. Library's right in our town, kids getting out of school, they need a place to go.
Yeah.
Can't miss it. All right, after the library is sewer, before we talk about the board members, anything else going on we need to discuss?
No, we had a couple incidences with the heavy rain, but they were taken care of.
All right, bear with me, I'm gonna try and go over this board member's thing, if I get anything wrong, I apologize and if anyone wants to correct me, that's fine too. So, Mr. Heideck was correct in the way he broke down the way the board has been functioning for the past five years, but the fact that there are two board members on concurrent terms is evidenced that something's wrong. And in going back, I believe Barb and you went back on the records further than five years to try and get to the root of what happened and why it happened, it came down to when a sixth seat was removed from the sewer authority. The records were not clear as far as when someone would get appointed, like the seats resolved and like whether that seat was at the fifth seat or the sixth seat, and they went through sewer minutes and borough minutes to try to get some clarity on what happened there, because the only way to make sure we're clean now, when obviously we're not if we have two concurrent terms, is to try and go back to when it was broken. And that's what they did. The problem is that they found out that the records are unclear enough that there is no way to determine definitively from ten years ago, fifteen, whatever it was, to now, a clear path on those seats. Some of the seats, yes, but not all of them. After consulting with the borough attorney, which Barb did after our last meeting, the determination is that in that sort of an instance, where it's impossible to be clear through all the research that they did, and it was two of them, they have the ability as the sewer authority, but the authority that we as a body granted them to determine their own seats and their own terms as best they can. And those are both members of the sewer authority who did that. We granted them the authority to do that so that we didn't have to. Sewer authority acts independently in many ways. That's one of them. As we were told, that if they present that to us as the borough council, and they say, this is what we came up with, it's the best we can do, and we are allowed to accept that as that's our position in this. We can accept what they determined as an independent sewer authority, which they did based on the records and what was signed in December by the sewer secretary, and I know you signed some of the papers involved with that as far as determining what was going on with the seats. So.
I signed for a five-man board.
Yes, and that's the, that's when that was made official, so many, many years after it should have been. If you never saw the five names on the sheet that Ernie, not Ernie, you're Ernie, John showed us, I apologize, I didn't see it either, but that was something that happened within the sewer authority. Like I said, we're they are created to run somewhat independently with our oversight, but they're authorized, and correct me if I'm wrong, to make those kinds of decisions and do those things, and the lawyer backed that determination, that they can make that decision, figure out what those seats are, which they did, they filed them with the state. And at this point, because that's the seats determined, that's what's with the state, I think it would be a much bigger to do to disrupt that, because we would basically be saying that we don't agree with what the sewer authority figured out, so then we have to investigate, and I don't even know what the process is for that, for us jumping into that. Maybe someone will figure it out. So.
Lot more time.
Correct. So as much as it did, obviously, as Heideck pointed out, change some of the seats, that was a decision that was made at the sewer authority level. So that the sewer authority, I would assume the sewer authority board would have had to approve that list, or at least.
We didn't vote on it.
I don't know how it got filed with the state, but maybe, I don't.
The chairman signed off on it, and it was filed with the state. We all agreed that we were going to a five-member board, we were gonna file.
I agree to a five-member board, yeah.
I'm not gonna argue, I'm just saying we all agreed to a five-member board. Kelly's the one that did all the paperwork, you were the chairman, you signed off on it.
Yeah. Okay, whatever.
I'm just saying, I can't speak to what you did or didn't see. If you didn't see that document, I'm not sure why that happened, but it did get filed with the state last year. And that document did show the seats, including your seat coming up at the end of last year.
But John is right on the seat that I took, the guy that I took, his spot.
That is correct.
Yeah.
I'm not gonna dispute anything John said, except that the problem preceded the five years. Because we had two seats coming up concurrently at the same time, Brian sees and I don't remember the other.
Yeah, that was after our dominant board.
I understand, but that means the problem preceded you. And so the way to fix it was for the sewer authority to just kind of decide to the best of their ability what those seats would be and what those terms would be, because they could not find a historic record to tell them what they should be. And they did that, and that's the decision they made, and whether we agree with it or not is kind of irrelevant at this point, because they made it and they filed it. If we do wanna argue it, that's what I'm saying, I don't know what that step is. If we decide that we don't agree with what they did, because they've done it, and the lawyer said they were right to do it the way they did it, and everything was legal, and that's where we stand.
Yeah, I'm not gonna argue with you, because you're not gonna hurt me one way or the other.
I'm just trying to make sure it's clear, everything that was done was done legally to address a problem that was seven, eight, nine years old, which you know because you guys finally made it a five-seat board in December to try to fix that problem. And as part of that process, this list was created with these names and these terms, and that's what they are now. And whoever was involved in the creation of that list and the decision-making of that list at the sewer authority made that decision.
Okay, that's your decision, I understand it.
That's just, I'm saying, that's my understanding of where we're at. If anybody else has any other thoughts, I'm open to them. All right. Code enforcement.
Just to thank Barb for taking care of all the ordinance letters and everything, I know it's a pain in the butt, but she does a great job to make cars not easier.
I think we could all agree that Barb does a lot for this body, and we certainly appreciate it.
Yes, she does.
All right, that wraps up committee reports. We'll shift to old business. I have your plan for a borough building, which is now just an inspection.
Yeah.
All right. Did you have something? Did you have something on it? You kinda looked like you were.
I have a lot of things going on up here.
But we'll lead you to it. Sister City, the mayor laid out some of where they're at on that, does anyone have any additional, or Chuck, did you have anything additionally you wanted to say about it?
Well, I just, I heard most of what she said. The people that we've talked with on our Zoom meeting gave us a tremendous amount of information and direction on how to proceed and involve the other organizations in town that are involved or could be involved with the Sister Cities project, not the least of which is the Rotary, the Swedish Festival, and also Nebo Chapel because of the heritage and, you know, the history there. It was, it was tremendously valuable time spent with these people, and I think we're just very much at the tip of the iceberg. I couldn't hear what she said, I know there's a one-hundred-and-ninety-dollar fee to join, and once we do that, we're a part of their website, and then, then we can move on from there and exploring the opportunity of getting a Sister City. I believe at this time, I would like to make that motion that we that we spend the one-hundred-and-ninety dollars and join Sister Cities International.
Does anybody have any further questions about it, or would like to offer a second to that motion?
I'll second.
Chuck makes a motion, Frank seconds. Silence tells me there's no further questions, so I'll call for all those in favor.
Hi.
Hi.
Opposed. That motion carries, Chuck.
Okay, thank you very much.
I'll let you all know when we have our meeting about this, I know we want to pull up the people and think through like what this looks like and who on focuses resources on, you know, the older folks in town, I think you have more of a connection to potentially places in Sweden, so I think we're gonna have a kind of a community get together on that, so I'll let you guys all know when that's gonna happen. Probably after Chuck's surgery.
Probably, Hilltop Heritage Coalition would probably like to be involved.
Yeah, certainly, yeah.
And the Swedish.
Yep, yep. We talked about the Lutheran church, the churches, Nebo, yeah. Especially, I think, the folks who work with Nebo, you know. So, we'll keep you updated about that, I think it's really exciting.
Right, well, thank you both for all your work to get this far on it, and just know that you're appreciated, because I do think that's a great opportunity for our town, so, thank you.
They were equally excited to talk to us, which was kind of nice, so.
All right, solar plant, energy audit.
We pretty much talked about it, so.
Okay. Flower baskets for decorative light poles, I am coming up with prices between a hundred-and-fifty to two-hundred dollars, I know we talked about last month's one of the prices. I have spoken with several people, I'm gonna reach out to the companies, I got, there was a lot of other crap going on this month, so. I've come up to a hundred-and-fifty, two-hundred dollars to get the ones that are self-watering. My family is looking to do six of them if we can. We have enough people to get, we believe, ten or more so far, so I'm gonna see if there's a price break out there. In other words, I need a little more time, we're still working on it, but we're getting closer to getting something going with that. And the people that.
Mr. President?
Yes, sir.
I'd like some clarification on the cost of those projected planters. Is the borough expected to buy the hardware and the hanging mechanism? And then we're looking for outside donation or sponsors or pledges to.
I was actually. I was just gonna get into that, because I realized I hadn't clarified that. At this time, we are looking for donors to provide all of the cost for these things. The borough's involvement is in choosing the final product to make sure that it is compliant with what we want, that we are comfortable with the safety and everything else. And then what will happen is it will become a sponsorship opportunity for businesses, organizations, and individuals who would like to sponsor a planter that would then be purchased at such time as they would like to sponsor. I don't expect to fill all of them this year or even the next few years. But I have a feeling, once a few go up, we'll probably get some more up, kinda like your veterans banners, because I've had a lot of people who seem pretty keen on the idea.
Thank you for the clarification, but I'm going to suggest that it will be similar to the veterans banners. The first year, you know, the interest was rather light, but once, once they saw them on the pole, then interest took off and there was a great deal of involvement and participation, and it'll probably be the same way with the, with the planners.
And that's certainly our hope, and as the sidewalk project phase two happens, when that, ever that happens, there'll be even more opportunities for people. Does that answer your question?
Yes, it does, thank you very much.
You are very welcome. All right, anything on old business that I missed? I don't think so. So we move on to new business, which is the Aqua Letter of Interest. And I think I'm gonna have to let Barb start this one, because you were involved receiving that first one, the letter, didn't you?
I received it.
Could I take, could I take the lead on this?
If you'd like, by all means.
Yes.
Yes.
Okay, a couple of things I wanna clarify before I begin. Number one, can everybody hear me clearly?
Yes.
At least, at least those on council that need to. Secondly, where I am, I've been, there's been a very serious electrical storm in the area. At times, I'm getting a lot of static in my phone, I don't know if you're hearing it. And if I cut out or you can't hear me, then you'll need to speak up. I wanna apologize to the council for my absence. I really intended to be here tonight to do this presentation, and I appreciate your cooperation and your indulgence as I move forward, okay?
Okay.
Okay, on or about March twenty-eighth, Brett Morgan received a soft call from Aqua representative asking if he thought that the Mount Jewett Borough Council or the sewer authority would be interested in selling its wastewater system to Aqua. Councilman Morgan told them that he thought there would be interest in selling it, he referred Aqua to Borough Manager Harp for further discussion. Manager Harp had a couple of calls from Aqua and asked him for a formal letter of request asking for potential sales talks. On April twenty-fifth of twenty-twenty-four, we received that letter from Aqua asking us to explore the possibility of Aqua purchasing our wastewater system. Manager Harp forwarded a copy of that letter to all the council members via email, and it also went out to Mayor Howard and our solicitor, and I believe that you all have a copy of that in your packet tonight. It's no secret, ladies and gentlemen, that I have been an advocate of divesting the sewer system. This is something that I felt should have happened a long time ago. When Brett informed me of Aqua's interest, I decided to take a lead in this discussion. I'm convinced that when it comes to owning and operating their own municipal utilities, small communities and municipalities such as Mount Jewett have no business being in business. Towns like ours cannot successfully maintain, adequately repair, replace, well, not upgrade their utilities. Combine that with the ever-changing demands and mandates from the D E P, state and federal agencies, it becomes an even greater task to stay viable and compliant. We need to recognize and realize that our system was installed approximately nineteen-thirty-nine, which puts it at about eighty-five years old. We have an estimated forty-nine thousand two hundred linear feet or nine-point-three-two miles of sewer line in our system. It's also estimated that approximately eighty percent of that line is original clay terracotta lines, which are sorely outdated and have long since outlived their lifespan and have not been used in newer replacement construction projects for many years. The current estimated cost, we looked into this through some engineering firms and contractors, sewer line replacement is running at about a hundred-and-ten dollars per linear foot. If we were, if we were to replace the entire system, it would be over five million dollars. Just, just one mile from Division Street up through Main Street, the main line to Chestnut Street would cost well over half a million dollars. When you, when you look at the, the system as a whole, it's in pretty good shape, however, the ponds will eventually need dredging, and that's, that's estimated at about one million dollars each. We're also in need at this time of two-hundred-and-fifty-thousand dollars worth of electrical upgrades so that the aerators could be put back into use because they're, they're inoperable at this time. So you can see there's a lot of money and potential for a great deal of expenses we move forward. As of March, the financial report for the Mount Jewett Regional Sewer Authority shows a positive balance of two-hundred-and-ninety-six thousand dollars, give or take. And while it is currently debt-free, as you can see from the estimated replacement cost, three-hundred thousand dollars does not go very far. In April, for example, just last month, a root ball blockage on West Main Street cost twelve thousand dollars to unclog. That was not a line replacement. That was just the cost of diagnosing the issue and bringing in a company, a contractor with an auger that would dig through the root ball and opening up the line and unclog the blockage. This issue arises from time to time because the age of the line and the materials that are used, and once it gets a puncture perforated, the roots will continue to grow. Now, augering through that clog opened the line up, but it doesn't alleviate the situation because the, the roots will grow back, they didn't dig down and replace the line. So th- this is something that comes up from time to time, it's an ongoing issue. The East End Pump Station continues to be a, an issue with overflowing. Uh, even after $50,000 worth of, uh, line maintenance and upgrades were put into it, we've still had a couple of overflows during heavy rains, which puts us in a non-compliant, uh, we have to report that to the DEP. Um, after Aqua purchased the water system in 2015, they made an offer of just over a million dollars for our sewer system. I was council president at that time and also on the sewer board, I made a motion for the sale, but it died for the lack of second. Some of the arguments for retention and keeping the system at that time were, uh, as follows, number one, it's an asset to the community. Number two, it's a revenue stream, number three, we were unsure of Aqua's ability to operate and maintain based on the short time of ownership of the water system. Number four, the sewer system was debt-free. And number five, selling it to another entity like Aqua would mean higher rates. Ladies and gentlemen, I, I, I've gotta tell you, these, none of these arguments will hold water, be it clear fresh water or sewage water. It, 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 it just, it's just not valid arguments. The only, number one, the only way it's an asset to the community is if it were to be sold. It, it, it has no borrowable ability to the borough and, and it can be used as collateral, but only to the Sewer Authority if they were to choose to borrow money. Number two, there's no revenue stream whatsoever to the borough. Uh, all revenues go directly to the Sewer Authority and they cannot be used, borrowed from, or diverted to any other borough application, so if the, the, the argument that, wow, we're losing an asset and a revenue stream, uh, that, that's kinda moot. If there was any uncertainty as to Aqua's ability to operate, upgrade, and maintain our wastewater system, that has certainly been put to rest as evident in their system upgrades and line replacements of our water system. Their 24/7/365 computerized monitoring of our water system detects leaks immediately and are corrected quickly, thereby reducing water, uh, production loss and disruption of service. When we owned the system, our loss rate was in excess of 30%. Uh, I mean, that, that for, for every 10 gallons that we produced, we lost over three gallons. Uh, that's kinda normal in cell operations, but that's preposterous i- i- in terms of the big picture. To maintain and repair the service was great, uh, you know, greatly, uh, hindered, e- especially when you talk to Ma- looked at Maple Lane. Um, and Aqua came in and, and alleviated that problem and put in a pump station that the, uh, the Water Authority couldn't even borrow another $50,000 to put in a pump station. So they, they definitely demonstrated they have the capability and the, and the resources to upgrade, fix, and maintain. As to possible rate increases, we have to face the reality that it's inevitable, regardless of who owns and operates the system. E- even if we retain, um, uh, possession and operation and ownership of it, rates have to go up. Our rates have only increased $4 per month in the last 10 years. While Mount Jewett has one of the lowest usage rates in the state, that's an unrealistic rate, artificially low compared to other municipalities in the area and the state based on actual cost of operation. Now here's something you need to, you need to look at, Johnsonburg and Wilcox have a combined system, they're paying $90 per month. Port Allegheny has a base rate of $41.50 per month, plus $3.46 per thousand gallons of water. So an average two-person household pays nearly $70 a month. Tamlin Township, Western Mount Jewett is paying $60 a month. Even if we retain the possession and operation, rates will go up significantly. In discussions with Penn Vest about potential loans to fund system upgrades, we were told the rates would need to increase by close to 50% or more just to bring the debt-to-income ratios in line with their requirements for a loan. At the current rate, we cannot sustain, let alone perform any significant upgrades, and, you know, let alone repay any debt or loan that it would take to upgrade the system. As to rate increases, municipal ownership gives us the ability to raise or lower rates, uh, at will, whenever we choose. Uh, and we will be forced to raise the rates in order to justify the cost of work that we hope to do. When you contrast that with a PUC-regulated entity such as Aqua, the sale, uh, has to, or the, 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 the rate increases have to be approved, and they have to demonstrate and show that they've already spent the money and done the work to try to justify any further increase. And, and from talking to them in the past when we were involved with the water, they, they told us that the money has to be invested in the work performed, and if they feel that they need a 5% increase, they will traditionally request 8 to 10%, hoping to get close to a 5% approval that they really need, and will have to show justification for the request by showing that the work has been done and the investment has already been, been made and completed. A sale of the wastewater system can be done in a couple of ways, the authority can negotiate the sale or dissolve itself, allowing the borough to handle the process, or the borough can assume the assets, capital, and operation of the system through a resolution similar to what we did in 2015 with the water system. In discussion and negotiation, some of the items that we can look to address are, and I just put these out as some potential, uh, bargaining issues that we would go into. Uh, we would look for a moratorium on rate increases similar to the two-year period we had when we sold the water system. Uh, if there's going to be a rate increase, we could possibly, uh, seek a step-up rate increase approach whereby an increase is sought, it would ha- happen incrementally over a period of time rather than just all at once. Uh, we could possibly see a return to a base rate plus water usage billing system, which means that a small family or a single-person household would probably pay significant less than a larger household or a large water consumer. We should have maintained that in the past. The authority chose not to pay $1 a month per reed in order to stay at, at that, and that's how we ended up where we, we pay the, the flat rate and everybody pays the same no matter what their usage is, which really isn't fair. So we would hope to maybe negotiate, uh, returning to a base rate, uh, plus water usage system. In 2016, we were offered just over a million dollars for the system. Uh, until we enter into negotiation and each party gets a separate appraisal, we have no real idea of its, of its, of its current true value. But based on current market values and estimates, some of the things we may be able to do with the revenue from the sale, and believe me, I'm just speculating here, I'm not trying to count chickens before, or the eggs have hatched or let alone even laid. Uh, money from the proceeds could potentially, and I, I emphasize potentially, hold the tax rate at its current level with little and no significant tax increases for the foreseeable fut- future. Again, potentially, there's no guarantees. We've had one small tax increase since the sale of the water in, in 10 years. Given the cost to run the, the borough and an aging population with a shrinking tax base, this is, uh, this is a big deal in my opinion. Another thing we may be able to do is, uh, the amphitheater project, which was scaled back because of increased costs, we may be able to put that back up to its original projec- projected, uh, uh, cost and, and what we had hoped to achieve. Um, we may be able to, uh, possibly, uh, go with a, uh, an- another badly needed sidewalk upgrade and, uh, you know, at least come up with engineering fees and matching grant monies. Uh, that is another possibility we may be able to look at. Uh, we may possibly, uh, look at remitting a portion of the proceeds to each customer based on an EDU basis. This would help to assist with any potential rate increases. Uh, we may possibly be able to, uh, gift the emergency services providers and the library with badly needed funds to ensure their viability. And, uh, we may be able to u- use the proceeds as we did with the water to use as an investment base to give us, uh, something that would serve our, you know, our community for generations to come. So there's, there's a lot of potential, I mean, and, and this is just scratching the surface of suggestions. Um, I, as a council member, having been around for over 12 years, I, I believe it's in the best interest of the borough as a whole to ensure its continued viability that the borough take over the operation and assets of the Mount Jewett Regional Sewer Authority as we did with the water system in 2015, and that we would negotiate directly with Aqua for any potential terms of sale. Some of us were here in 2015 and we are familiar with the negotiation process. Another item of interest, while this is not a major factor in deciding the possibility of a sale, just as sitting here in South Carolina and listening to what went on earlier in the public comment, a sale of the Mount Jewett Regional Sewer Authority would eliminate a major source of strife and drama in the community, just as it did when, when we divested into the water. Lastly, I refer to you to the resolution prepared by our solicitor, which I believe you all have, am I correct?
Yes, sir.
Okay. This would enable the borough to take over full operation of the Mount Jewett Regional Sewer Authority and its assets and liabilities, enabling the borough to negotiate directly with any potential buyer of the wastewater system. I hereby motion that we adopt this resolution, and if it passes, the signage and approval of the letter of intent to negotiate with Aqua the possible sale of the wastewater system. Thank you for your time and attention, I put the motion on the table.
Awesome, the motion.
We have a motion, we have a second, but we have not had discussion. I'm opening the floor for that purpose.
You said there's 9.32 miles of pipe, how much was re-sleeved already?
I'm sorry, I, I can't hear the question clearly.
How much was re-sleeved of the 9.2 miles of pipe?
Believe that roughly 80% is still original, so it'd be 20% has been replaced.
Okay. I'm just curious.
I'd also like to make it clear, even though Chuck did point it out as a, a quote-unquote benefit of dissolving the Sewer Authority and that it would resolve the dispute that we addressed here tonight about the Sewer Board, that is not a factor in this resolution coming before this body.
Right.
This, uh, resolution has come before this body solely as a result of Aqua's interest in purchasing it and to streamline that process, uh, directly from the borough and Aqua, since it is a borough asset and we are responsible for, uh, managing the borough. Um, it is, it does make some sense that we would be the negotiating body for such a sale. I just wanted to clarify that, Chuck.
Well, I thought I made that fairly clear, but thank you for clearing it even clearer, thank you.
Um, anyone else have any thoughts or questions? Your res- your, um, motion is for both resolutions at one time, is that correct?
Yes, I believe that if, if the one passes, the other one should follow as, 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 you know, in turn, if, if, if we think we need to go with the second resolution, so be it, but I, 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 I don't necessarily believe that's necessary. And if we're, if we're to go to a, a vote, I, I would ask for a roll call vote.
Well, I intend to. Um, are there any questions? Chuck laid out a lot of information, does everyone understand everything that he said? I want to make sure that this is an informed vote by everybody here.
He motioned to take over the sewer, to pass these.
Yes.
Pass both of those resolutions.
Yes.
I'll second it.
Chris, I second.
Oh, I'm sorry.
I just wanted, I just wanted to make sure there's no further discussion, you have a question?
Do you want a roll call?
At this time, since there isn't, we'll have a roll call vote.
Okay, I'm gonna start with Brett because he's going to.
I'll say.
Okay. Chuck? Chuck?
Hello?
I vote yes, I vote yes.
Chris?
Yes.
Tom?
Yes.
Frank?
Yes.
Jason?
Uh, yes.
Robin?
It's just to pass these two resolutions, it's not...
It does not mean we have agreed to sell the water system.
It's just, we'll, we'll enter in.
Okay, yes.
Okay.
All right, that motion carries. Thank you, Chuck, did you have anything additional on that?
No, I do not, I, again, I apologize for having to do this long distance and I appreciate everyone's patience and indulgence, thank you very much.
The only thing I'll say on this...
Okay, bring snacks back.
Well, the only thing I'll say on this is remind everybody that it does stay confidential at the top of this negotiation form.
Correct.
We'll executive session most all of it until it becomes public.
All right, um, that is the last agenda item, the last thing we have is public response. Um, we covered a lot in this meeting, does anyone here have any questions or comments about that?
Uh, just one question, nothing to do with sewer. Oh, your speed limit sign coming into town still only goes up to 99.
We appreciate you testing that for us.
You get the record.
Good lord, how did he's tied?
Going airborne over here, it's a state river city.
For like three months.
Yes. Uh, I would just like to, uh, make note, it was said in, uh, Mr. Parr's, uh, information. There are, uh, grants that can be applied for that we might be able to do at the Sewer Authority to, uh, alleviate the upcoming, um, expenses that have been also noted, so just a, a further thought that needs to be...
No, that's good to know.
...talked about in your negotiations.
Those issues, it's still here, they need to be put back and addressed, so thank you for that. Did you say you were coming?
Yeah, I just wanted to, um, publicly thank Lance, um, Slub and Jim Chapman for putting all the better banners and also helped out with that project. I also wanted to thank you, Tom, and the Boy Scouts, you guys have been doing a lot around town. Everyone's around town has been doing a lot to make their homes look beautiful, but you guys have done a really nice job and all, all year round, but especially I think you guys, and I think it's really nice everyone's taking time to make their properties look great for town, so, thank you all.
Sorry.
Yes.
I, I just wanted to clarify, I said grant, but I, I meant Penn Vest is, is more what I meant.
Okay, okay. All right, thank you, um, there's no further questions, I'll entertain a motion. Chris?
Second.
Tom, all of us in favor? Any votes?